Call to order the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for July 2nd, 2024. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We'll move right into the order of business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the order of business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There's no change to the order of business this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any discussion on the order of business? Now I'd look for a motion on the order of business.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the order of business.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on the order of business? Hearing none, all in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda the commissioners wish to discuss? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear. Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item, we have a little bit of, um, an item that we need to take care of, that we couldn't take care of, uh, last week or the last meeting, and that is our High Speed Rail Alliance to rescind that motion. And, uh, City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed previously, the commission had previously voted, uh, in support of a membership with the High Speed Rail Alliance. Uh, it was discovered thereafter that that wasn't the right organization that the city was committed to. Uh, so with that being said, we would need a motion for reconsideration. If my memory serves me correctly, I think Mr. Otterman made that motion initially, Ms. Sobeluk seconded that, so we would need that, um, motion for reconsideration to be made this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko.
So moved.
We have a motion to rescind the, uh, joining of the High Speed Rail Alliance.
Second.
By Commissioner Otterman and the second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And the next item up is the oath of office for our newly elected, uh, commissioner, myself and Commissioner Otterman. I will proceed to the podium. We'll go first and then Mr. Riddle and Mr. Otterman will go.
Raise your right hand. Aye and state your name.
Aye, Scott Decker.
And then repeat after me. Of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of President of the City Commission.
Of President of the City Commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Your certificate, sir, if you could sign that and then have it notarized.
Sir.
All right. Thank you, congratulations. All right, Commissioner Otterman.
Mr. Riddle.
We'll get both of you in front. All right. I'll have both of you raise your right hand and then repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, John Riddle.
Uh, of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commissioner for the City of Dickinson.
Of the Office of Commissioner for the City of Dickinson.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, gentlemen, please sign those. And then present them to the notary. Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry. Mr. President, the oaths are done.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, be, and before Mrs. Sobeluk, uh, leaves, uh, again, thank you so much, Mrs. Sobeluk, for your, uh, uh, service to this city over the last four years. It's really appreciated.
Well, thank you for allowing me to serve with you and thank you guys for continuing to serve our city. It's, it's been a pleasure and an honor and I know I'm leaving you guys in good hands, so thank you.
We'll move into item C. And this is the Vice President selection. I would call for any nominations for the Vice President.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Frederick.
I nominate Dr. Bear as, for consideration.
We have a motion to nominate Commissioner Bear for consideration as Vice President.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Since there are no nominations, I can go to, uh, just a voice vote for consent. All in favor of Dr. Bear becoming the Vice President, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Bear. Okay, we'll move into City Board Committee Appointments, and this will be, uh, presented by, uh, City Administrator Dossinger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Uh, this last week, I met with, uh, Mayor Decker regarding discussion regarding some of the City Commission, uh, committee assignments. In front of you, you'll have a list of, uh, uh, various, uh, committee assignments and, uh, and where you would be seated. Um, at this time, I turn it back over to Mayor Decker to, to walk through them if you have any questions or any concerns of any boards or committees that you have been assigned to.
What I tried to do on these is tried to equalize them out. Um, I think myself and Commissioner Riddle have eight. Um, everybody else should have seven if my math is correct. Um, some of these are quarterly, uh, some are monthly, um, and then there are some that are only meet once a year, like the, um, uh, grant committees and, uh, the subsidy grants and the Southwest Regional Grants. So I've tried to balance them all out and, uh, get commissioners to, um, see the overview of everything that the city deals with, um, kind of getting Commissioner Riddle immersed right into the finance part real quick. So he gets the, gets, gets his feet wet with a lot of that stuff, so welcome to, uh, finance with me, so. Um, any other, uh, any concerns, that, any conflicts that commissioners you think you have that making some dates or you see any that might not work out? Not, I guess I'd look for a motion to, um, approve the committees as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Riddle to approve the committee assignments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion?
Just only one correction. I think, I think planning and zoning is now the second Wednesday, right? We should make that adjustment going forward. I don't know if there's any of these other ones.
Yeah, we have on here the third, right?
I think we changed that at the beginning of the year, so.
To the second. Now we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. The next item up is the Ports to Plains. Again, this will be presented, uh, by City Administrator Dossinger with me assisting, I guess, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Uh, the 2024 Ports to Plains Conference can be held in Dickinson at the Astoria Hotel, an event center on September 10th through the 12th. Uh, the Ports to Plains Alliance is a grassroots organization of communities, organizations and businesses from Mexico through nine U.S. states and Canada. Its mission is to advocate for robust transportation infrastructure along with the region's key economic sectors such as food, fiber, fuel, energy, industry and tourism in order to promote economic security and prosperity throughout North America's energy and agricultural heartland. This corridor of national significance connects the major oil and gas plays across North America, including the Bakken, Libra, Permian and the Eagle Ford. Uh, we are looking, uh, requesting city staffs recommending that we be a silver sponsor for the event. It would be $2,500. Uh, we would get logo recognition, a summary, advertisement, a link in the conference app. We'd also get two complimentary, uh, registrations. City staff is looking for approval for the silver sponsor for this event.
And last year, this, uh, national conference was held in Eagle Pass, Texas. Um, we went out, uh, myself and, uh, Cal Cluen went out to, uh, Washington DC to advocate for, um, additional dollars to complete the Theater Roosevelt Expressway and, um, I think through our work, we convinced them that they needed to come here this year and with the help of Terry at CVB, we're working really hard, um, to give them a very memorable experience because many of these people, this will be their, their first journey to North Dakota. Um, and with the, uh, Presidential Library coming in, in '26, I think this would, we're gonna, part of this, uh, conference, we're gonna be taking the individuals out there, show them what's happening out in Midora with the library and everything, and that'll encourage a lot of tourism in, into this area. And we're hoping that, that, uh, the, uh, Ports to Plains Alliance gets the word out, good things happening here in southwestern North Dakota, so. If there's any other questions I can answer or Mrs. Thiel's here from the CVB. And Mrs. Carlson, we're gonna take that, uh, money out of the marketing or?
Uh, we're taking it out of the, uh, budget of the commission.
Okay, out of the commission, okay. Any questions? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up, we have a CVB board appointment, and this will be by City Administrator Dossinger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Jeremiah Thorpe has been approved by the Dickinson Convention and Visitors' Bureau Board to fill a vacancy. Uh, the CVB Board feels that Jeremiah's financial knowledge and community involvement will be valuable to the CVB. City staff recommends approval of Jeremiah's appointment to the CV Board of Directors, and Terry is available in the audience if she would like to add any comments regarding that.
Yeah, well, thank you having, having me back again. Um, yeah, we asked for this approval. We are, um, adding him on. We tried to make sure that we have a well-rounded board representing different industries that were, that will communicate and advocate for, um, for our mission, bringing people in. Um, so Jeremiah has been active on other boards, the chamber and that, and he'll represent us with the financial, um, outlook for the community and, and our board. So I'd answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Ms. Thiel? Now I'd look for a motion on the CVB board appointment.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Dr. Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Library Board Appointment, and this will be presented by President Kuntz.
Good afternoon, President Decker and Commissioners. My name is Troy Kuntz. I am the President of the Dickinson Area Public Library Board. I bring before you two nominations today for the board. The first would be Kimmy Ho, who will be seated as, uh, on a three-year term, and Lisa Ani, who will fulfill the last two years of her term that was vacated this year. On Friday, June 28th, the Library Board, in their regular meeting unanimously approved both of these candidates for their specific terms. Their applications were provided to you in the packets, and on behalf of the candidates in the Library Board, we would recommend your approval. Uh, Ms. Ani was able to be here if you do have any questions for her specifically.
All right. Thank you, President Kuntz. Any questions? Now I'd look for a motion on these board appointments for the, uh, the appointments for the Library Board.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And we'll move into the date for the first budget work session, so everybody get their calendars out. Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Yes, we are setting the date for the first budget work session for the week of July 8th. So it'd be, that's a Monday. Um, it's the 8th, 9th and 10th. I am looking at a full day schedule, agenda, and I would like to set that so we can get it scheduled. This will be the preliminary budget that we'll be looking at, just an overall what the preliminary budget is, and then further work sessions will get, dive deeper into revenues, um, our projects and capital items and things, so.
I'm open on the 9th and 10th, so. You, and though, you said 8th, 9th or 10th, right?
10th, I, is P and Z.
Yep. It's also that, too.
I've got good availability on the 9th.
I'd make the 8th or 9th work.
And Commissioner Otterman, you said the 9th is good for you?
Yep.
Okay. And Dr. Bear?
Yep.
Okay.
I think the 9th is kind of across the board.
That would be fine.
Jason, are you okay the 9th?
Yeah, I'll make it work on the Tuesday.
What, what time will we get, start? 8?
8 to 8:30, yes.
Okay. What, 8 or 8:30?
Uh, I'll, I'll say 8:30.
8:30. All right. 8:30 on the 9th.
Yep.
Until complete.
Yes. If the, if the P and Z would happen to go over, um...
Well, that's the 10th, though.
Oh, that's the 10th. Okay, I was thinking that was on Tuesday. Okay. Again, I'm reading the wrong committee date.
The 9th, I'll make work.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And upstairs, here upstairs, what are, what are we looking at?
We are going to be scheduling it in the training room like we did before.
The training room?
Yes. So we'll all be around there. But I will send out an agenda and everything, so you'll have your packet and everything to look at before we do that.
And we'll notice it.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, everything noticed, okay.
Thank you very much.
Get this in my calendar here. We'll move right into, um, public safety, and we have our medical director agreement. Chief Presnell.
Thank you, President Deckers, Decker and Commissioners. Um, before you deny requesting approval, uh, for medical director agreement with Dr. Zimmerman and Sanford Medical. Uh, the medical director, it's required, um, by the state for licensing, not just for what's gonna be happening with EMS, but for our current, um, QRU license. That's where we originally engaged with Dr. Zimmerman was to, to get our QRU, um, license, and through discussion with him, he did agree to, um, or he was made aware of the potential for the ALS license, and then we also asked him if he would be willing to be the medical director for dispatch and then the tactical team for PD, and he agreed to all that. So with all that being said, um, fire and police staff do recommend approval, and I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Chief Presnell. Any questions for Chief Presnell about this medical, medical director services agreement? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Chief, you got a quarterly fire, fire department report.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Again, I'm here tonight to present the, um, quarterly report. This is for March through June. Um, just a reminder to everybody, the, the services we do provide, it does go beyond, um, just fire suppression. We do do some EMS response right now, a lot of fire prevention activities, building inspections, stuff like that for fire code, and then we are a part of several regional response teams, hazmat, confined space, uh, high and low angle rescue, as well as, um, structural collapse. Um, for the timeframe, we did respond to 629 calls for service. That does put us just under 1,000 calls, um, year to date. We are looking at about a 1% increase. Um, we do attribute the, the, or decrease, I mean, the decrease to just how wet it's been. Um, normally around this time, we'd see a lot more fire calls and stuff like that, but we have, have noticed a drop in the fire calls because of just how much rain we've been getting. Here's a breakdown of calls by month. Um, it's a little bit all over the place. We do start to see a little uptick as we get farther along in the year, so we do anticipate we'll probably end the year a little bit above. I don't think we'll see any significant increases as compared to years past. Call types, uh, EMS calls do, uh, represent the largest number of calls we respond to at 70%. Um, and then false alarm or good intent calls come in second, so, and then fire calls account for 2%. Calls by apparatus, we did have a lot more, um, responses with the engines than we normally see. Um, we were trying to look into why that was, and it just seemed like we, with the warmer weather, we were out training a lot and doing a lot of fire training, so they were responding from like the training grounds or somewhere else in town when we were training to, to other calls, so that did show an increase in our, in our, um, larger apparatus responses as opposed to the, the quick response units going to those calls. Calls by station, um, as always, Station 1's area does see the most calls, um, 71%, and that is south of the interstate is what we would consider Station 1's call. We are currently looking at how we can better divide, um, the city to split it up a little more equally between the two stations. Um, we're almost done with that, so once we get that done, we'll see how we can implement that in dispatch and then, um, deploy it in the fire department. Here's a heat map of where calls are happening. Usually where you see the redder colors, it's probably an apartment complex or some type of group living facilities. We do see a lot of, um, or multiple calls in those types of areas. We do have several apartment complexes that we go to frequently. Response times, we're doing pretty good at Station 1. Station 2, again, we attribute this a lot to the increased training we did since the warmer weather hit. Um, we are seeing some decreased or, uh, increased response times out of Station 2 because they are, we're usually training at the training grounds, which would puts us closer into Station 1's area, so it does add a little bit of time for responding north of town. Training hours, we're sitting pretty good for the year. We're 60% of our, of our overall training hours for the year, uh, so a little bit of head where we should be. Um, we have knocked out a lot of our officer training, all of our hazmat training for the year, and we're starting to knock out a lot of our company training now that we can get down to the training facility and, and get some live fire. They're actually doing live fire training tonight as we speak. Fire prevention activities, uh, 477, uh, routine inspections for the quarter, um, and then 56 other prevention activities, and then eight, um, certificate occupancies were issued for the quarter. We did attend several events. Um, we attended Easter at the mall, the Easter egg hunt, uh, the prom for the high school, that was a good time with the police department. Kind Hearts Day, we had our high school and college program, uh, the completion of our firefighter one academy, and then we participated in the citywide cleanup, and we did, um, participate in the guns and hoses softball game. It went really well for the fire department. And then with that, I would gladly answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Presnell on this month's report? What was the final score?
The score wasn't important. They, they stopped counting after. It was a lot closer this year, I will say that. I don't know the exact score.
Then how do you know who won?
The frowns on their faces at the end.
Any, uh, other comments or questions? Thank you, Chief. We'll go into, uh, community development. The first item up, we have downtown lighting phase one bid rejection.
Mr. President, Commissioners, um, so we have a, uh, recommendation, recommendation for, uh, rejection for a bid proposal for the downtown lighting phase one. Uh, the submitted contract was for materials, uh, construction for the project, uh, on the order of $406,600, and that was on a firm basis. Uh, the project was approved in the 2024 capital improvement project budget, and it was to be paid out of the, uh, local sales tax. The total project for the budget was $403,000, so the, uh, this bid exceeded the total project budget, uh, and it exceeded the, um, engineer's estimate by over 16%. Um, and it is our, um, city staff recommends, uh, rejecting this proposal or approving the rejection. Did I say that right?
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions for Mr. Keller? I think there's a map that was, uh, provided for everyone, the proposed lighting. If we, uh, take this back out for bid, what, uh, timeframe are we looking at for this phase one B?
Uh, we would anticipate it being, uh, rolled into next year. Uh, we do believe that we can, uh, achieve some economy of scale, uh, within anticipated approval of phase two and rolling those two projects together. Uh, we also have, uh, an opportunity for the, uh, urban roads program, which overlays all of, uh, phases one through five, uh, with potential grant money.
So 403 was the budget for the whole lighting project? All five phases or? I'm trying to understand. Because we're only $3,000 off, I'm trying to understand.
Right. 403 was for the entire 1B, uh, phase, uh, which included, um, materials, construction and engineering, so, um, 406 exceeds the budget for the entire phase 1B.
So just the products is 406,000?
No.
Just the light poles?
Uh...
Or whatever it is?
So, yeah, uh, materials and installation is 406. Uh, the estimate, uh, the 403 includes the engineering piece of it, the 406 does not.
Do we, do we get a price on the, the engineering?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, engineering is estimated to be about $50,000.
So then we're 53,000 over.
That's correct.
Okay. And we think we're gonna get a better price? Next year?
Next year, with inflation?
Uh, to answer, to answer your question, uh, Commissioner, we're also actively identifying, uh, similar options for light poles. Uh, light poles that are visually similar, but are, are, um, have a better value, i.e. less expensive.
Okay, alright.
Okay, we have a recommendation for bid rejection. Is there any, I'd look for a motion.
I would move to approve that.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion?
So, we're voting to approve Jeff's recommendation?
Of the reg- yeah, of the rejection, correct.
To reject. Yes.
Seems silly.
Any further questions or? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Keller. It is five o'clock, so we will go into public hearing. Um, and public comments not on the agenda. This evening we have zero in the public hearing. So, public comments, anyone wishes to come forward, um, has any comments on items not on the agenda, now is your time. If you're watching online, seven zero one, four five six, seven zero zero six.
Good evening Commissioners and President Decker. My name is Ruth Healy, and I'm just here because I, I wanted to share that I've been attending the library board meetings, and, um, recently attended the meeting that had the election, and I just wanted to state that, um, I'm seeing great growth in the progress of the board and improvements in terms of their procedure and their openness to community response, and I just wanted to share that, um, this election compared to the previous year's election was very professionally run, and, um, I just see a lot of positive changes.
Alright, thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on items not on the agenda? Please come forward, or call into seven zero one, four five six, seven zero zero six. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? See, there are no further comments on items not on the agenda. We'll close the public comment section. We'll move back into, uh, community development, and we'll have the South Fork, oh, excuse me, South Fork Acres Major Final Plat, and this will be presented by Engineer and Community Development Director Skolicek.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration is a final plat, a final major plat, being a replat of Lot One A Block Two of South Fork Acres subdivision, a parcel of land located in the southeast quarter of Section Sixteen, Township One Thirty-Nine North, Range Ninety-Six West, um, just outside of the city limits of the city of Dickinson, so it's in the extraterritorial zone. And, um, it's also located just outside of the urban service area boundary, and, um, I believe we've... No, we did not put that on the map. Um, so this total property includes fifty-one point one one acres, and, uh, meets all requirements as per Chapter Thirty-four of the, uh, municipal code. Uh, has been approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. There is a development agreement in your packet. A couple attributes of the development agreement to, to point out, um, the... So it's the, the eastern easement, but on the map that you're looking at ultimately, um, kind of the, the upper easement, uh, in between the individual lots. That easement's currently shown for ingress and egress, as well as for private utilities. Uh, in this case, being that there's developable land to the north of this property, uh, the intent is, is that, uh, in the agreement, in the development agreement includes information that, um, if at the time that the city of Dickinson deems that it's necessary to provide additional access to the property to the north, if that's developing, uh, then that area included within the easement limits would be available for, uh, right-of-way dedication, and, uh, those individual lot owners would not be able to protest or, um, uh, go against the, the opportunity to dedicate the right-of-way. Uh, and then, the, that would give us that secondary access to Highway Twenty-two, uh, and, uh, to that property to the north. And then the other attribute is then that, uh, spelled out in the development agreement, is that along Dvorak Drive, then they would be obligated to pave that private drive within the right-of-way limits. Let's see, aside from that, uh, the, the rezone was recently approved, and, uh, so, city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolicek. I, I don't have the next resolution number, as there been a, one assigned to this previously, but there, there's not a resolution number currently on our agenda. I don't think there's been one assigned to this.
No, not to this one.
Let me look back here. Thirty-one? Okay, so this will be thirty-two? Thirty-two twenty twenty-four, dash twenty twenty-four? Are there any further questions on the South Fork Acres Major Final Plat?
I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, a vote, Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Skolicek, you have, um, the monthly report for engineering and community development?
Yeah, good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. Uh, monthly report for engineering and community development. I'll start off with the planning side of things. So, um, so, so far we've had a, a pretty busy year overall. Uh, twenty-six total pre-application meetings, um, throughout the entire year. And, uh, May and June, those are now looking to be kind of, from a historical standpoint, continue to be kind of our busiest months. Uh, we had ten agenda items on the May P and Z, uh, agenda, and then in June we had six. So now ultimately you're seeing all of these items clearing through city commission and, and, uh, those kind of things. There is still availability to our transportation master plan and comprehensive plan for public engagement. The QR code is available, and then the, um, the publication for that is available, uh, both, I think there's a link on our website, and then, um, I believe the DOT still has that posted on their website, so...
Do we have a, um, a way of tracking how many comments? I mean, do we have a running total? How many people have actually participated?
The last time I looked, which was some weeks ago, we were in the several hundred.
Okay.
So, but that was three or four weeks ago, so... I can definitely look and put that in the next monthly report if that's something of interest. Uh, building and codes, so showing the number of individual permits that have been paid and picked up. Um, then we have the breakdown specific within city limits, as well as that, um, within Stark County, being that they do the, the permits in Stark County. So, as you can see, we continue to have pretty good activity, and, um, I think specifically if you look at the, the permanent activities and compare it to last year, we had some unique commercial development, uh, applications and whatnot that came in, so, so uniquely large, so I think we're, we're ultimately trending in, in a pretty decent spot. Engineering, uh, so a number of projects underway right now. Basically wrapped up the North Industries Utilities Project, uh, did our final walkthrough on that, and just working through closeout right now. On Sim Street from Ninth to Museum Drive, uh, in that case, the, um, as the public may have seen, ultimately there was a small bit of the street that was, the pavement was removed. Manholes were shipped for the project, but unfortunately the basis for those manholes was not included on the shipment, and so, so that was what the delay was, that, that was caused there. So, uh, looking to start that project, uh, back up here in, um, two weeks, uh, right around two weeks from now, so... Highway Twenty-two, um, from Eighth Street South to Fifteenth Street, so all the ongoing activity with the pedestrian ramps, uh, and then later on in July, then we should see the micro-surfacing occur on that. East Business Loop also, the micro-surfacing, same contractor was awarded on both projects, so, um, should take place, uh, basically in the same general timeframe. Twenty twenty-four road maintenance project is well underway, making good progress, and, uh, working on the, the Mill and Overlay component on Fifteenth Street right now, so appreciate everybody's patience. There's a lot of traffic on that road, and, and traffic control was challenging with the amount of driveway approaches and those kind of things, so... I haven't received, um, too many concerns, but definitely some on that, on that project. Uh, the residential area of the Mill and Overlay, that's going well, and, uh, they'll be moving the paving crew, once they finish up Fifteenth, down to the residential area for paving. Uh, Sundance Cove's lighting, uh, that we just, uh, had the bid reject- rejection, and will continue to work on further, uh, I'm sorry, um, downtown lighting, uh, Sundance Cove's lighting, that's, uh, continuing to make really good progress, and, um, and, and ultimately, uh, happy to see the light poles going in and, and things getting done out there. Uh, and then the water main to lead service line project, so that's, uh, just east of City Hall here. Making good progress on that project. We've actually replaced a number of the lead service lines already, and then, uh, we've got some, some footage in the ground for mainline replacements, um. And then that was, uh, about two weeks ago, we had the, the main tie-ins, and, uh, so there was a, a, about a five-hour shutdown of, of a pretty sizable area of the water main in that area. That's fundamentally part of the reason why we're having this project, is because there were so many valves that were inoperable, so to get to those valves that could operate and could actually shut down the water, uh, we had to close off quite a few blocks and, and shut that down until we're able to make the tie-ins and, um, and complete the additional valving, so... As you can see, we have quite a few projects underway right now, uh, all in varying stages, and, um, I think a few things, uh, most notable, so the public has hopefully received the information, uh, we tried to post that out in, in multiple different ways, but the Highway Twenty-two traffic signal project, so we did in fact receive communication, uh, with the design team in collaboration with the highway, uh, North Dakota DOT, as well as, um, with the consultants working on the project, that, uh, the, the warrant, uh, study that was done and the additional traffic counts that were done at Third Street West and Third Avenue West, uh, it did in fact warrant the traffic signal, so that will be, uh, part of the project next year, when, uh, those traffic signals are being replaced. Uh, and then, as a, as a side note, then, next week is the planned time for, uh, the Broadway traffic signal to be bagged, and so that is the, that is the current schedule on that project. Any other questions? I guess you guys have any on any of the other specific projects? I think those are the most notable and impactful to the public right at the moment, though, so...
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Uh, for GIS, um, so we continue to make good progress on the data that's available, and then the utilization of the data. The Public Works Team does use quite a bit of the data, and, um, on, uh, tracking progress for their maintenance activities, as well as, um, just, just make sure that we've got a good understanding and easy access to what, what utilities are, are located where. Just, uh, for public information as well, just the different available maps that are available to the public on our website, um, very good information on there, so... And, um, making sure that as, as information changes, such as rezone, future land use map amendments, things like that, we're ultimately making sure that we're getting those updated in our mapping.
With that, I'd stand for any questions or feedback you may have. Any questions? Thank you, Josh. And the last item this evening, uh, Commissioners? It's your time, uh, if you have any, uh, comments? I have one. Uh, we ju- recently, um, since we rescinded the, um, high-speed rail, and we joined the, the proper uh, train that is more locally, um, and more suited, um... Commissioner, uh, Bear has come forward, uh, he's done a little bit more research, and there are some opportunities, um, for a, a commissioner to possibly sit on one of their committees. And, um, he approached me saying that he would do that, but I wanted to, off since, uh, Commissioner Bear is our representative, uh, at the League of Cities, um, I was going to off, if someone else would possibly want to do it, if not, then I would let, um, Commissioner Bear pursue that, and, and try to get on one of the committees for the, the Amtrak. Anyone?
Since he found it. He, yeah, he found the additional work for himself, so...
I don't mind.
He's our planes, trains, and automobile guy, so...
I'm good with it, so...
Okay, alright, that's your baby.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else Commissioners?
Mr. President?
Uh, Commissioner Riddle?
On the next meeting on the sixteenth, I will not be available.
Oh, I see.
I know, I know, the newbie, gotta start off right, so...
Okay, uh, thank you for the heads up. See, 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 uh, the, the young guy? You know how he does that? He tells, tells me like mu- two weeks ahead of time. Not thirty minutes before.
You're looking at me, I know.
So, thank you for that, the heads up, so... Alright, anything else? I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So, second?
We are adjourned.